Nice question. No?
It is 5:30, we will go ahead and get started for the June 18 regular meeting. And number one, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First off, we have a recognition of guests. Yes, sir.
Good evening and welcome, Board of Education. It's good to see you, masks and all, so we're ready to go. I do want to take a moment to say thank you first off from McCracken County Education Association, your teachers, for the pay increase that you were able to approve. We do appreciate working with Jana and Michael through the process and professional negotiations. So we do want to take a moment to say thank you for that. Through my leadership as MCE president, we've seen three different superintendents. I have been to Frankfurt. I have been through an election cycle with Governor Bevin and now Governor Beshear, and all that entails with Stephen Pruitt, who was a wonderful education leader for the Kentucky Department of Education, and now Kevin Brown as well, and as an interim position, and as we're looking at the new director for the Kentucky Education Department. Throughout this leadership role, it has been a joy to be able to work with you. It's been a joy to be able to stand in the gap for the teachers when they could not go to Frankfurt, to stand in a gap, to make phone calls, to send emails, and just to let them, just to let the teachers know that someone was carrying the torch for them. So I do appreciate being able to work together to make this happen. Appreciate Mr. Carter and his excellence in leadership. I know on my calendar, when February, March came around, I didn't have this on my calendar. I don't think anybody else did, at least in this earthly realm. But I go back to the song that I sing in church a lot, that many things about tomorrow, I may not understand, but I know who holds tomorrow because I know who holds my hand. And so we're able to make it through and still carrying the torch for educators. We've had some wonderful professional educators that went above and beyond throughout this crisis, this health crisis we've been through, and I want to say thank you to them for doing what they did to make it happen. What a year, what a past, what three years it's been as MCE president, couple of years, whatever it was, it's been so long now. I don't even know how long it's been, but one thing I do know is even the ending of the school year was difficult when C.D. McCord and Casey York were no longer with us. Two of our active teachers, two active teachers at KEA have both have been to Frankfurt at some point in time in their career. C.D. and I were the last two to be able to go before Bevin was pushing the pension issue. So they will be missed, and I hope that their legacy can continue to carry on, that we can care like Casey and love like C.D. And of course, McCracken County Education Association is taking care of some memorials for them through the high school with our principal, Mr. Hauser. So we want to end a very solemn year with the passing of our two professional educators that did such an excellent job of loving the students, caring for the students that they saw each and every day. So with that, we thank you for another great year in McCracken County. We have endless opportunities for our students. We have one vision, and as I always hear my superintendent say, stay McCracken proud. Thank you for staying McCracken proud. Thank you for the endless opportunities, and thank you that we have one vision, one voice, McCracken proud.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Next up, we have the minutes on the previous meeting. The first meeting was on May 12. I need a motion and a second to approve those meetings. Minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve those.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Minutes are approved. Next is the June 2 meeting. Need a motion in the second.
Motion made.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Minutes are approved. Monthly financial report. Mr. Johnson.
Financial report. I wanted to share with you that we are learning more about FEMA opportunities for reimbursement for some of these expenses that we have and will have related to the virus. Right now, we don't know how much and what that amount is, but we have been learning that we would be able to get 87% of qualifying expenses reimbursed, but we don't know how high that amount of money goes. Just wanted to point out to you that we had a bond payment in the month of May. You'll see that on the financial report, and we have pulled some of the money from our building fund and some from the capital outlay fund to go in to make that bond payment, and that's been the plan, what the budget was for the whole year to do that. And then just a reminder, as you look back over past financial reports and you look at May, when you look at the one for June that you'll get next month, you'll notice our expenses are significantly higher. That is not related to the pandemic. That is because we have two payrolls in June, and we just have a small payroll in July. So we have exceptionally large expenses in June, low expenses in July. So I just wanted to prepare you for that. No cash flow concerns or anything like that. Do you have any questions on the financial report? Thank you.
I have a motion in a second to approve the monthly financial report.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Monthly financial report is passed. Mr. Carter has entered into the record of personnel actions. No more action is to be taken. Number three. Number four, board reports. Mr. Carter, what would you start tonight?
Let's see. Don't have that. I guess we can go ahead and just start with maintenance. We need this one.
Yeah. Good evening. In the maintenance department this past month, we've been doing a lot of just general maintenance. It's okay. We've been doing a lot of just general maintenance, mowing, taking care of the grounds, and work inside the schools. No major projects, like specifically, that I can tell you. All my guys have been in all the classrooms. Air conditioning, we've been working on those. The cooling tower at Concord, I can tell you that that arrived on Wednesday of last week and was up and running Thursday or Friday around lunchtime was the safe time to say. It had been running before, but around lunchtime, we had it up and going good, and it's been going good ever since then. So, and you can tell a huge difference in the school. They pulled a lot of humidity out of the school, so that was a well-needed, well-deserved purchase there. Any questions?
How is the sewage situation from heat elementary to...
That is in the hands of BFW engineers. They're going through design on the two plants that we have to see if there's anything. I mean, the one's going to be shut down, but the other one, to see if there's any upgrades we need to do as far as the aerator or any pumps, recirculation pumps while we're doing this project. And then they're doing the site layout to get the force main over there. So that's in the design phase.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Is this one?
Yeah, I'll be the next one. For the superintendent report, one thing that Mr. Jackson hadn't mentioned, he's been working with Mr. Bowlen on, is they've been meeting with various vendors to get the best price on cleaning supplies and agents and securing training for custodial staff. If anything comes good out of what we're dealing with, it's going to be some standardization of cleaning. And what the conversation I've been having with both of them through this, it's not about cleaning for COVID, it's about cleaning period and setting a new practice and precedent in place. We're also looking at increasing the fog or ionizing machines that you can go in and rapidly clean, do that. So some of that is to be done for the summer, and then also is to make sure we have things in place once we get students back in the buildings, which is our ultimate goal, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. Currently, we're working on our reopening plans. I've had some conversations with you all, but we have two task force committees that are focused on this project. One is operational and the other is instructional. So we're trying to identify all of the, you know, have multiple plans in place, and then we're going to have to, you know, take representatives from each group who truly understand those and work on the logistics of combining an operational and instructional, you know, endeavor and practice. You know, we've been reviewing the details of possibly modifying bus routes and pushing the start of school back to a later date in August and modifying potentially some bell schedules to help accommodate transportation needs, meeting requirements that may come down through KDE, which includes the 1,062 hours of instruction and the number of days, and to make sure we have an opportunity to provide staff training and time to implement a blended type of instruction, which is going to include both in-person and virtual because, you know, as we move forward through this, we want to make sure that parents have options. You know, everyone is dealing with this pandemic differently. We did a survey, and 92% of the parents who responded to that survey said they wanted their students back in-person classes. We have 8% that said they did not until, you know, there were better things in place, not with the school, but state and nationally, vaccines. We still have to service those students. So, you know, that's going to be a unique situation. Working with MCE on getting staff feedback on their fear and concern on returning to school, I think in the next couple of days, they're going to kind of share a survey as well because, again, that's another piece to this that we'll have to work in. Got a pretty good feeling that it's going to be 8% to 10% of our students that are going to want some type of remote, virtual-type learning, and we may have some staff that we dedicate solely to that. And the ones we would dedicate to that might be some that have health concerns that are legitimate, that we don't want to put them at risk when we come back in person. So if we can use those in a creative situation, we will. And we're going to have to work with EPSB on that because, again, there are some certification requirement and issues that make it kind of difficult just to say, oh, well, they can do that, you know, grade level and subject area. So we're hoping that EPSB and KDE will give us some flexibility. But again, that is something that we find out that changes from week to week with our weekly guidance. And I'll say this past Tuesday was probably one of the best commissioner updates that we've received because we got some, you know, very pointed instruction, including the FEMA direction, and we're supposed to be getting some more, another guidance document, I think, that'll be more specific other than questions this upcoming Monday. As I said, we know teachers are going to need extra time in developing blended learning models, and we're going to have, make sure that parents will have options as we open school, whether they're going to send them to school or do virtual, remote learning. Athletics, you know, we're following KHSA guidelines, and right now, we're monitoring groups of 10 athletes with one coach, and that's something that Coach Miller has worked with, and Mr. Bowlen have worked with the local health department on getting approval, and that's, you know, been going very well, very strict guidelines as far as that goes. They, KHSA did waive the dead period, and the one thing we've made very clear is, you know, there's nothing mandatory at this point because it, you know, it's only a group of 10 anyway, and there's not been very many state championships in esports, one in the month of July. So, you know, this is about safety, and I think the last thing that any of our coaches would want would be to lose a group of 10 to 20 athletes for two weeks for something that can be avoided. So that's been going very well. You know, we're still, want to encourage staff and community to take precautions as the economy's opening up. You know, just because things are open and more people can go out, that doesn't mean we need to let down our guard and relax the things that we're doing that's kind of limited, you know, and put Kentucky in good shape. With that, we've ordered Chromebooks for the upcoming year, and those, that order will include all three middle schools, our high school update, and will also increase the number available at all of our elementary schools. So, you know, for virtual learning, we're going to be in good shape as far as devices. However, there's more to it than the device. I mean, we got to have teachers who are trained and students that, you know, can utilize those things. So the one thing that, you know, I will say is we have to have faith in our students. You know, this is not a time to point out flaws and weaknesses. It's a time to, you know, focus on and believe in what is possible. I was talking to, I believe, Mr. Squinskey the other day, and, you know, I've got a friend that's got a four-year-old daughter who can go get a Chromebook and an iPad on her own. She can open it up, turn it on, and she can go to a number of different apps and do what she wants. So having faith and belief, I mean, they are digital. I mean, they're digital. I mean, this is a generation of digital kids. They're not immigrants, kind of like we are, that we didn't have computers when we were in school, and we had to learn how to use them after the fact. I mean, they grow up with these devices in their hands. So we're going to do that. And, but one thing I want to reiterate is we want to see our students in the fall. We want to see our students in August, and we want to provide them both the physical and emotional support that they're going to need, you know, as we continue to deal with this COVID pandemic. I know there's a lot of questions. You all may be getting questions. As I've said, you know, we're working to have kind of a finalized plan that by July 10th is kind of the date that I've given the task force so that we can bring something to you all at the July board meeting to say, hey, this is how McCracken County Public Schools is going to open in August. Thank you all. Any questions?
The KDE questionnaire that's been floating around Facebook and Instagram, do they have intentions on sharing the information with you all? Have they been working with you all night?
Just to ask us to share it out, I honestly do not know if we will get that information back by county, by district. I think they're wanting to compile that holistically, so it'll be seen, but that's a great point that we want to encourage everybody. Any of that information is very important at this point. You know, when we send out that survey, and 92% of the parents, and we had about 3,000 respond, a little under 3,000. So, you know, close to 50%, almost 45%, which if you're a statistic person, meaning it is a valid survey, and those are representative of the large community at large. I mean, that was important. That kind of helped guide us. So when those type of surveys go out, it is critical that, you know, we get honest feedback on those because it does help in the planning process and how we're going to allocate staff.
I'd like to ask about Ms. Walker's question. If KDE is going to keep all this as one group, you know, I would hope that they realize that McCracken is different than Pike and different than Jefferson, and if we got that information, we could use it. But as a whole, I don't know.
Yeah, well, and that's kind of part of the difficulty. They want to kind of give every district the autonomy to make those decisions. However, they still want to work within the statutes, and that makes it very difficult. I mean, you know, a state with as many school districts as we have, that many independent boards multiplied by five opinions on each board, I mean, it becomes very taxing, especially on an issue, and this, there's so many different viewpoints on, you know, is it litimin? Is it real? You got conspiracy theorists that want to... And here's the thing, it all has merit, but at the end of the day, what we want and what our parents want and what I truly feel that I want to see when we get the teacher survey wants is we want to see our kids in person so we can, so we can love at them as a social distancing space. But we want, we know the best type of instruction is in front of a person, and we want to do everything we can to provide that. However, we also have about 7,000 students and 1,000 employees that we have a responsibility to make it as safe as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next is the Board of Education report. Does anybody have anything that they'd like to share at this time? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Everyone has had a chance to look over the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or anything they would like to talk about on the items of the consent agenda? I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion now, a second. All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Consent agenda is passed. Letter B, 2021 salary schedule for certified classified personnel.
All right, you all have seen a copy of the salary schedule, and as Mr. Davidson mentioned, we have been through the professional negotiations process with MCEA on behalf of all the certified staff. And the most notable changes here on the salary schedule are to incorporate the 0.5% raise agreed upon through professional negotiations, and that is for certified through the negotiations process, but also applied to classified as well, so they get the same benefit. There, the other proposal, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, was to have teachers who are covering another class during their planning period paid, and I'll explain that a little more in detail, but that's written out fully here in the salary schedule. Do you all have any questions about the salary schedule? Okay.
All right, what's the superintendent's recommendation?
Recommends approval of proposed salary schedules for certified and classified staff.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion made.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion is passed. Letter C.
Thank you.
Professional negotiation salary agreement.
Yes, thank you. The next item is our salary agreement for professional negotiations. We have a contract with our teachers that runs through June 30 of 2021, but we negotiate salaries annually, and so part of that process is difficult because we have to wait until the General Assembly finishes their process, and we find out what mandates will be coming down from the state. And then, of course, the spring, we've had just a really difficult situation, but we were able to get together and have a couple of meetings that were very productive and professional and went through the process very efficiently and very quickly. I have attached for you a copy of what all the proposals were, the back and forth between the negotiating team for the teachers and the negotiating team for the board, so that you can see for transparency all of the back and forth. There were a total of three proposals that we discussed back and forth, and two of them have been approved by both groups, and so we're asking tonight for your approval as well. The first one was an overall 0.5% raise for classified staff and certified staff, as well as a one-time payment of 0.5% to be paid in November of 2020, and there would be a minimum of $200 on that for full-time. It would be prorated for part-time staff. And the other item, I thought maybe I could read it to you from the actual salary schedule just to show you the wording of how we put that on there. We said, "Teachers required by supervisor to cover another teacher's class due to the use of half or full sick, emergency, or personal days may be paid by a timesheet at the ESS hourly rate for time spent covering the class. Teachers may submit the timesheet to their supervisor for approval." And that ESS rate is the same as a rank three zero-year teacher. So those were the two items that the teams came together on and agreed upon from asking for your approval of those items tonight.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson?
I have one.
Yes.
Didn't quite understand. You said 200 was the memo?
Yes. Yes. That's similar to what the board has offered in the past, so that our classified staff who are paid less than teachers still get a nice amount.
All right, Ms. Walker, what's the superintendent's recommendation?
Superintendent recommends approval of professional negotiation salary agreement as presented.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Letter B, approval of contractual agreement with KDE for implementation of the 21st Century programs.
All right, we all, we have had 21st Century Community Learning Center programs and grants in our district for many years, and we were excited, just incredibly thankful and grateful this year that Genevieve was able to write grants in conjunction with the principals of the schools, and we were awarded five grants in the form of a continuation or a renewal grant. These are listed on the staff note for you. The total annual amount is $870,000 for the 2021 school year. There's $150,000 for Reedland Elementary in its third year, $125,000 for Lone Oak Middle in the fourth year, $100,000 for Heath Middle in its fifth year, $100,000 each for Kinder and Lone Oak, McCracken County High School, Reedland Intermediate, and Heath Elementary, all in their sixth year, and $95,000 for Reedland Middle School in its 10th year. Reedland Middle School is the first school that we had in the district to receive that grant, and so I'm asking for your approval tonight to allow Mr. Carter to sign that paperwork for KDE so that they can begin sending us the money for those expenses.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Superintendent's recommendation?
Before I make my recommendation, I just want to make sure everybody truly understands and appreciates the job that Genevieve does and what she does for this community, above and beyond the school system. I mean, she is a true blessing that a lot of people don't understand the hard work that she does, but she's responsible for a lot of revenue outside of McCracken County coming into our school system. So with that being said, I recommend approving the contract between...
So with that being said, I recommend approving the contract between McCracken County Public Schools and KDE for the 21st Century Learning Centers.
Do you have a superintendent's recommendation? Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Letter E, McCracken County Board of Education Policy Annual Update, 2020 First Reading. Mr. Walker.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Carter. Tonight will be our first reading of the KSBA Annual Update. After the General Assembly does meet, KSBA goes through all of our policies and makes recommendations based on their legal experts along with any updates to the law. So tonight will be just the first reading. We'll have a second reading for approval in July. So just in review of what will be updated, you will see in 0183 in service training that board members are not required to have charter school authorization training until you do receive an application in your district. In 231, school resource officers does define that their primary job function is to work with the youth at a school site and that also all SROs are to be armed with a firearm. In 0311, 0321 and 034, the hiring of certified, classified and substitute teachers language was changed in regarding substantiated finding of child abuse or neglect to now being read as administrative finding and along with the definition of what it means for administrative finding of child abuse. In 3121, salaries, the national board certification received after July 1 of 2020 shall be given an annual supplement in accordance with the amount appropriated by the General Assembly. If it's less than $2,000, then the local board does have the option to provide an additional supplement to equal $2,000. In 319 and 329, professional development requires that the active annual shooter training for classified and certified staff be approved by, provided or prepared by the Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice Training in collaboration with KDE. 3131 and 3231, the assignment removes the 8990 hiring date exception of a classified or certified assigned to a school in which their spouse is the principal. In 0327, the discipline suspension dismissal of classified employees, cause for action now includes the failure to provide cooperation or consents necessary to serve or continue serving in positions required licensure or being disqualified from serving in a licensed position based on information obtained by the district from the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration Drug and Alcohol Electronic Clearinghouse. In 4.1, the budget and adoption now includes the exception that the working budget with a minimum reserve of less than 2% will expire in June 30th of 2021. And 4312, school activity funds, updates the definition of school activity funds, district activity funds, language also provides the board discretion to determine donation value to be retained at the school level. External support and boost organizations are solely responsible for ensuring their groups is in compliance with all policy guidelines and regulations. And 54, safety removes the requirement that the district safety coordinator be a district level administrator, also adds exceptions for when classroom doors are to be locked. 548 again is referencing SROs are to be armed. 6221, bus drivers use of tobacco and other substances. The Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration regulations require districts to comply with the federal bus driver clearinghouse rules that require checks on applicants, annual checks on current drivers, informing drivers of reportable conduct and reporting disqualifying incidents to the FMCSA database. 81312, which is the home hospital instruction now permits that instruction can be delivered electronically. 912, the admissions and attendance requires the state agency children be, their records be transferred within three working days upon request and that there be a collaboration between schools and state agency workers to transition that student. 91223, the persons over compulsory attendance age allows now local boards to establish guidelines, to establish a program for any student over 21 years old wishing to complete a high school diploma. 9126, for students of military families, lift some regulations in regards to determining residence if they have a property waiting, enrolling a student in which a family, military families awaiting the property become available in that district. 915, student fees per red book regulation, fees collected by student clubs or organizations shall be accounted for in the district activity fund bank account. 922, safety, students' health and safety, schools that require or imprint student IDs must now include on those IDs the National Domestic Violence Hotline number, the National Sexual Assault Hotline number and the National Suicide Prevention Hotline number. In 92211 and 9227, employee reports of criminal activity and child abuse, there is additional language in terms of requirement of school personnel with reasonable cause to report specific abuse of females. In 933, fundraising activities requires contributions and collections derived from school-sponsored fundraising activities shall be deposited in the school's activity fund bank account or the district's bank account along with the funds raised shall be the benefit to the entire group and now, and shall not be permitted to be credited to an individual student. In 212, the duties of superintendent, additional duty was added to permit the superintendent to determine additional staffing beyond the staffing allocation adopted by the board based on the school or district's improvement plans, identified needs, student enrollment. 3122, 3222, the holidays, persons employed certified or classified employed for less than a full year, contracts shall receive a prorated part of the authorized holidays calculated the nearest half day along with persons employed on a full-year contract but scheduled for less than a full workday shall receive the authorized holidays equivalent to their normal workday. And 31232 and 032232, seeking for certified and classified permits certified employees who have not been terminated for cause or certified or classified employees who have not been terminated for cause may retain their accumulated sick leave if they resign or have a break in service of not less than six months. And family illness or mourning now includes stepparents in that, in those policies. 31236, 32236, emergency leave, the bereavement for both certified and classified now includes stepparents. And 4.7 inventories requesting the adoption of the suggested KSBA language to inventory fixed assets with acquisitions valued at $5,000 or more. And we'll have round two next month.
You did well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. That's the first reading, so no board actually needs to be taking this time. So we'll move on to letter F, the permission to inform the lease of one mobile classroom unit for Heath Elementary School.
Yes, Heath Elementary School, which is a good thing, has experienced growth and are out of space. Mr. Cooper came to me and we started discussions on what we can do to get him more space for the students that he now has that he's out of space. He has used every space that he has. I mean, every closet, every, everything is, is full of teachers, students, everything. So one option, which we have used at Concord, is the mobile classroom setup. We have two of them at Concord. We have one Reedland Elementary School. So I started exploring, looking at companies, calling companies. Most of the ones that I called did not have units on their lot. They would have to construct them, which there was no way we could get a unit by school starting. JMO Mobile Modular out of Marion, Illinois, is the company that the two from Concord came from. They somehow had one on their lot, brand new one, just hadn't been sold yet. Like the Clayton type homes, they don't construct for, for us. They do homes and they won't change their line just to build two rooms with two bathrooms. So JMO Mobile Modular had it and we've been talking and this is their lease agreement. It's for a three-year term, which is the same that we have for Concord. It's a yearly, but it's a three-year term. I know that sounds confusing, but you get the same price, but we have the option of pulling out if, if need be at some point in the future. That price is $16,500 a year, which is 1,000 more per year than Concord, but Concord we've had for several years now. So it's a typical inflation type price increase. So, and there's a setup fee at one time. I think it's $11,500 for them to do all the setup. Then we'll have to do the deck, the electricity, water sewer to that and technology. So I'm asking for your approval to enter a lease agreement with JMO Mobile Modular for a two-classroom mobile unit at Heath Elementary School. Any questions?
What's the superintendent's recommendation?
Superintendent recommends affirming the lease for a mobile classroom unit for Heath Elementary School.
Do you have a superintendent's recommendation? Do I have a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? To the panel. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Orders of the treasurer, do I have a motion in a second to approve?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion passes. Executive session, Mr. Carter, we don't have anything to say. We have session tonight, so we'll move on to letter G, the superintendent evaluation. We have all submitted and Mr. Bradley are finding the performance reviews and I think you've all got a copy of that today. Everyone has had a chance to look at that. I think, Mr. Carter, you received a copy this afternoon.
Sir.
And at this time, anybody that have anything that they would like to share, maybe their inputs, maybe what they shared with all of us or any kind of discussion they might have with Mr. Carter or Acculage or anything, I'll open up the floor for comments or anything for Mr. Carter.
I would like to say thank you for all your hard work you put in and coming in and just tackling it head-on and never skipping a beat and putting in the time and effort to, to make things better. And it's felt and it's recognized and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I would like to also say I appreciate your leadership and your strength and your confidence. I think that that just sets a really good example for the whole district and I feel like everybody is doing the best that they can given the situation. And I feel like that your leadership has had a lot to do with everything going as smooth as it possibly could.
You've done an outstanding job this year with our district. You've worked very well with our community leaders and our teachers and I appreciate what you've done and you've just done an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to echo the sentiments of the previous votes. I'm extremely pleased and one thing that I have mentioned to you that I like is some of the things that come up that look scary to me, you view as a challenge. I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to echo everyone else's comments. This, this past year has been, has been a year that I, I don't think any new superintendent coming in would, would want to tackle with the current pandemic and everything. And I just appreciate you, your hard work, your ethic, ethical, you do things right. There's, there's checks and balances, there's transparency, when transparency can be, can be done. I just, I thank you for including your team. You have an outstanding team here at the district office and I know that's, you know, a conversation that me and you have had, you know, from the very beginning and even, even ongoing is, is to include your people that you have here in this district office. And I think maybe with the second year coming up, you know, you've gotten your, gotten your feet wet and then, and now it's time, you know, to possibly make some decisions that need to be made. And I can say for myself, I fully support you in whatever facet they may be, as long as everything is done legally and ethically right. And I, I think there's, there's room for improvement on some areas and I think that may be something, you know, maybe we look at maybe next month before school starts, maybe some board ideas that we have that maybe we need to improve on and student achievement gap. I know with Ms. Birkin, she's real big on the CTE and getting kids ready for college. And I'm excited about the new online stuff that's coming down this, this year to get those students engaged and get those students ready for college. And I'm just excited what McCracken County is going to do from here on out with, with your leadership.
Thank you.
As far as anything you would like to add?
Well, I mean, all the words are kind, but none of those words could be done or accomplished without first year old support and faith and belief. But, you know, the staff that we have, I've said it from day one, is unbelievable and we have, the community support that we have is second to none. I think sometimes people take things for granted when that's what you're used to every day. But, you know, I'll reference Mr. Prowlus when he came in and, you know, donates $50,000 to pay off student lunch fees. You know, when, when we, you know, decided to deliver over half a million meals when this all started, we had bus drivers and instructional assistants and food service workers. When I was considering shutting down for spring break, that they come and say, no, we want to feed our kids. We have people that I have to say, no, you cannot come into the building because we've got to make sure, you know, everybody's safe. A lot of superintendents don't have that luxury to have to deal with those types of issues. I mean, our, our people, our community are second to none and it's always easy, as Mr. Davidson said earlier, for me to say, stay McCracken proud because we've got a lot to be proud of. But with that being said, we've got some work to do and I appreciate the kind words. But one thing that I've said from day one, you know, when, when I interviewed with you all, you know, brutal, honest conversations are critical for growth. And while sometimes I may not like what you all have to say to me, I know it's coming from a good place and it's being honest. And that's what it takes to, you know, take greatness to another level. And that's what we're in the midst of doing. So thank you.
I'll have a motion in a second to approve the superintendent's recommendation or superintendent's evaluation.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Letter G is approved. I need a motion in a second to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor by aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Second, guys.